Good morning and welcome to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM, Monday, February 14, 2011. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. Before I ask for an acceptance of the agenda, I need to make a couple of changes. If you would look under Item 5, which is SPOLOST, and Item B under that, we have a resolution requesting approval of change orders for several roads. We need to table that until a future date. And also, under Item 7, approval of the minutes, I would like to table that until after executive session. And with those changes, I would ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. The first item is under Public Works this morning, and that's a resolution requesting award of a bid for full-depth reclamation work on various county roads. Our presenter is Terry McMichael, Public Works Division Director, Exhibit Number 1. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Board members. This is actually the second piece of our bidding process for the reclamation this year. We have completed the first phase, and then this will carry us through the, kind of, the second phase. This, again, is a bid for full-depth reclamation on various county roads. The purchasing department sent this out. They issued bid documents to seven vendors. We received bids back from four. The lowest bidder, and recommended by our apartment, is Atlanta Paving and Concrete Construction. This is the same contractor that did the first contract this year, and they have been very successful and have done us a good job, so we recommend award of this contract to them. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item?
Okay.
Mr. Holder?
Terry, I saw that the contract price was $631,000. What is the total cost, including the asphalt? Now, I know that's $631,000. Is that, that's just for the reclamation, correct?
Yes, sir. That's just for the reclamation, and then we come back and put the asphalt back on top of it.
Right.
I don't, I don't have with me this morning, I don't think, an actual cost of each road. We have it, excuse me, broke down on each road, how much the asphalt would be?
Generally, with, what has the percentage been from the reclamation cost to the total paving cost? Is the total price, do you, I mean, you may not, you may not have that information available, and that's fine. When I saw that, though, I was wondering if it's going to cost $600,000 to reclaim them, and I think that's definitely the thing to do, and the right avenue. But what is the total cost of the project, once it's completed?
It, we can say for sure that the reclamation was cheaper to go this way than it was to patch the roads. So, on this phase of our resurfacing program, I can already tell you it would have cost over $600,000 just to patch them, because that's what this, in essence, does. We spent, I believe, I wish Mike was here, over about $2.4 million in asphalt, which includes the reclamation. So with this contract, and the previous contract, there's probably a million dollars or so in reclamation, which would, guessing about a million, $400,000 to a million and a half in asphalt. We've probably put down at least half of that or more, so I'm saying to do the rest of what we're going to do this year, we'll put another $700,000, maybe $800,000 worth of asphalt to go with this. And that's, that's, that's a big guess, so I could be-
I understand, I understand that. But with that number of roads, and the number of feet in those roads, you're talking about about a million and a half, roughly, is reclamation and asphalt, correct?
That, I would say it'd be a million two to a million and a half, somewhere in that range.
That's all I'm looking for. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Alletta?
This is coming out of SPOLOST 2, is that correct?
I think so.
The resolution, I believe, says it's coming out of SPOLOST 2, is that, is that correct?
All the paving funds, I believe, are out of SPOLOST 2.
Is there, are there also, is, will this use all of the funds in SPOLOST 2, or there going to be more funds available in SPOLOST 2 for this type of work?
I think, and I probably need to get Rocky May know more about that than I do, but I know there's a project that I think they're fixing to close out. Is Patrick Henry SPOLOST 2?
Yeah.
Yeah, there may be some additional dollars coming from SPOLOST 2, possibly.
I guess, were these dollars specifically allocated to this type of work, or are they just excess dollars off of other projects that are now going to be used for reclamation?
These were, this, the, there was a lot of money that was pulled from SPOLOST 2. It came from a lot of different places. There were some projects that were completed that there was leftover money on. There was probably some, some interest money. There was, it was kind of a consortium of money, but it was all in the SPOLOST 2.
I'm just trying to project ahead, and that is with the number of roads we already have, the number of roads we're going to, we're putting in place and whatever, at some point, they're all going to have reclamation. I don't know if that's a 15-year, 10-year, if there's an average number of years, but has the department, or somewhere, have we done a study that says, you know, down the road, we're going to have, a need to have this specifically in a SPOLOST or out of the county budget to do the miles of roads that we have, or how does that get taken care of and budgeted?
Well, I can tell you tentatively, next year, because of our economic condition, there's a good chance that the asphalt or the resurfacing program will likely be funded out of the SPOLOST funds, again, it's very likely. This has been the first year that we have done that, and next year, obviously, will be, if we end up doing that, will be the second year that we've gone that way. In the past, all the resurfacing program has been paid out of the general fund. Originally, when we put this resurfacing in the SPOLOST, we were, we were hoping at that point in time to use that as an extra, so we could accomplish more. As it turns out, we've had to use that to, just to be able to maintain, you know, our resurfacing program. I would hope in the future that we would always, we would allocate in the next SPOLOST some, some money for resurfacing, in hopes where we could get all of our roads at the desired service level that we like. But for right now, trying to kind of balance the budget, we've had to use some SPOLOST funds to be able to do that.
You know, in business, you can go ahead and not buy capital expenditures or do the repairs, but eventually it catches up to you, and I'm just curious as to whether we're building up or have already built up something that down the road, we're going to have a whole bunch more than we normally would have, because we haven't been doing the kind of reclamation we should have been doing on an annual basis to keep up, ahead of the curve or at the curve, that's all.
Well, I can, I can assure you of this, that when we are reclaiming, or patching, or fixing the roads, as we do them, we are bringing them up to a condition far better than, on all of these roads, far better than when they were originally built. I fully expect not to have to do any reclamation on these roads ever again. The reclamation actually is a fix for the base. Once you get the base permanently fixed, and this is a permanent fix, then it's just a matter of the riding surface on top that we'll have to repair. So these reclamation projects are, are long-term base fixes that will carry us well into the future and will not have to be done again. So, that's another reason where we went this way. Instead of just patching the roads, we would have been back 10 years, eight years, having to patch again and do the same process. We feel like with this reclamation, that in, the next time these very roads are resurfaced, say 10, 12 years from now, probably 12 years from now, that all we'll have to do is put a new riding surface on there, and our base will still be adequate.
Actually, Mount Carmel Road was the first road that this process was used on, and it was done, what, three, three and a half years ago?
Three or four years.
And that was one of the roads in the county. There was no base underneath at all, and it was constantly patching, trying to keep those potholes filled on those. But it, the project turned out beautifully, and the road is in excellent condition. We've had no issues with it to date.
That, Mount Carmel was sort of like Greenwood. We were constantly out there patching pothole after pothole. We'd fix them, fix one, and it'd pothole right next to it, and they were connecting. And pretty soon, the whole road was a, was a patch. So we reclaimed it, and again, that's an excellent example. I don't anticipate, we've been, say, three or four years ago, seven, eight years from now, I don't anticipate having to redo the base on that, on North Mount Carmel Road.
Again, under that, I just dropped after this, but after, under that scenario, if this extends it to 12 years, if it was eight, or whatever, whatever number of miles of roads that we have that would fall, obviously, into a 12-year program, equals the number of miles of roads that we should be doing annually. That's, and based on that, I don't see that number in this particular proposal for $600,000, or a million two, or a million three. And I'm just projecting out where we're going to be as a county, as far as dollars needed for this, to keep the roads up for the citizens of the county.
I can tell you that right now, where you're headed is a, is a, what will it take to maintain our roads on an annual basis? We are coming up with that number, Chairman, and I anticipate having a draft of that to you in about two weeks. But just quick numbers, Commissioner, we have about 1,100 miles of paved roads in the county. If we paved them every 11 years, to make the math simple, that's 100 miles a year. You know, we're currently doing 30 miles a year.
That's where it's coming from.
Now, that's not as bad as it sounds, because a lot of these roads just have been built in the last five years. So it's not like I'm going to have to start today resurfacing 100 miles. But I can assure you, in the future, that that's the number we'll be somewhat close to. The real problem today is even though I'm resurfacing 30 miles, I'm patching 30 miles as all, and that's extensive. It, it takes about the same amount of money to patch them as it does resurfacing. So if I can ever get to the point that I'm resurfacing them as soon as they need it, I would be doing 60 miles today. So, you know, we're trying to catch up, and that's another reason we're doing these base fixes, so we don't have to come back in the future, so we can get to the point where we're just resurfacing and not having to spend a lot of money on, you know, on-
To your point, when you said, to your point, when you said some of them are only five years old, but if the roads that you're doing now had an eight-year life, and this process is extending them for another 12, those five years are only three years away, possibly, from being in the condition you're talking about. So that inventory may be building up faster than you think. You're doing a study, I'll just drop my question, when you get your study done and presented, that's, that's fine, I just wanted to explore it from there.
We've had that, had that conversation for, for a while now. In discussions with the Atlanta Regional Commission, one of the things that we had talked about was the, how far GDOT's money would be going in the future, as we look at our infrastructure. And by the time we hit, I believe, the year 2030, 80% of the funds that GDOT collects through the, the fuel, motor fuel tax, is going to have to be allocated toward maintenance of the infrastructure alone, and that's only going to leave about 20% for new projects, and that's not a lot. So getting a little glimpse of that, I had asked Terry to put together a plan for the county, because we need to start putting aside a maintenance fund for our infrastructure as well. It's not just the paving of the roads, but also the drainage pipes and, and things like that underneath the roads, bridges and things like that. We need to start thinking ahead, and it's going to be a pretty detailed report when it comes in, but it will give us an idea of how much we need to be setting aside to make sure we maintain our infrastructure that we have on the ground today, plus also any future that we will be putting in, which I'm certain we will have quite a bit of future infrastructure as well. But we do need to be thinking about that now.
Just last question. How many miles of road would you say these 10 projects equate to? I see the chart back there, but I can't equate-
With this, this list of roads, I don't believe is, is not all the roads that we'll be doing, because not all of the roads that we're resurfacing from now till, the end of June is kind of our paving season, or in this year's budget, I should say. This is the ones that are just the reclamation. I did bring a resurfacing list that we're doing this year, but I'd have to sit down and add up the roads we've done and the roads we haven't. But it would, it's probably roughly, there's probably 15 miles that we'll do between now-
Well, as far as, what I was trying to get to is of these 10 projects, if it was 10 miles of road and you're spending a million two, that would give us a cost per mile in reclamation that we could use as a benchmark, at least from this study, or from what you're doing, or from this bid. That's all I was trying to do, is figure out what is that cost we can look at that we're really needing to set aside if we're doing 60 miles instead of 30, or 100 miles, on a per-mile basis, which maybe there's reduction for more, but I don't know. But based on that, I was just trying to get to that, so I'll drop it from there. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a quick comment, and adding to what's been said about it. The LARP program, the Local Assistance Resurfacing Program, has been very instrumental. It's come from the state. And as far as, in our resurfacing program, and Terry, if I'm saying anything wrong, please correct me, but remember, that's state funding, and we know the economic condition of the state, and I think it certainly, we need to plan to not expect as much from LARP and other things, as the chairman just alluded to, in the future. So that will leave a void that we're going to have to, to make up. Otherwise, if we don't maintain our roads, just like preventive maintenance on your vehicle or anything else, then it's going to hit us hard in the future. And one of the problems that's got us into this, where we are as far as reclaiming, is the lack of base. Many roads were built many, many years ago, and there was either little or no base put down. It was, the surface was put down, the paved surface, and depending on the amount of traffic, it lasted or it didn't last. And now, we're, we're seeing the results of that. So anyhow, the reclamation is great. We do need to be cognizant of the fact of not expecting, in the future, what we have in the past from LARP and, and state assistance programs, in my opinion.
And if SPOLOST, the regional transportation sales tax does not pass in our region, that number will drop even more. There's a penalty attached for not passing the regional SPOLOST.
Just, just numbers, LARP in the past, before the economic crunch, we would get enough money to resurface anywhere from 10 to 12 miles, but they wouldn't patch the road. We'd have to patch on our nickel, and then they would give us enough money to buy the asphalt to pave about 12. If we'd had a contractor do that, that number would have probably dropped to about six miles. But since they gave us a lump sum of money, we would buy asphalt, we would get more mileage out of it by putting it down ourselves, where we wouldn't have to pay on the contractor to put it down. And Warren made a statement that's very true. It's, you can't say this road will need eight years, and this road, we have some subdivision roads, I hope, may go to 12 to 15 years between resurfacing. We have some major corridors, like Fairview Road, I can tell you, it won't make 15 years. Or Brandon Road, that's, is on the list now. Those roads like that, it depends on traffic volume and truck traffic and all those things. So, you know, but as an average, I would say you could use 10 or 12 years, you know, as a, as a general rule of thumb.
Mr. Alletta, he had another question.
I was going to say, to Commissioner Bowman's, or Holder's point, I said, you know, you were talking five years, and what you just said, Commissioner, is the fact that some of the roads are, you know, what they were made of to start with, again, that reinforces the, 10 years, maybe less, based on the numbers of those roads that you're talking about have been built with lesser quality, or whatever you're, you know, you think there is. So anyways, I'll wait for the study and drop it.
You know, and just the detail, just so y'all will know, that there's approximately 60% of our roads are not subdivision roads, and about 40% of them are. So about 40% of our roads, you know, you may get away, get away with 12 to 15 years in resurfacing some of those, but the other roads, these major corridors, you know, you may be in the 10 to 12.
Let me make one other comment. And Fred, I think this will answer some of your, when we're talking about roads in the past being paved, and maybe substandard quality, the vast majority, maybe 100% of the roads that have been paved in Henry County since 1996, have been SPOLOST-funded paving. Those roads that have been paved under SPOLOST have been built to the current quality standard that's required. We, we could not cut it skim on the quality of the road, because it had to meet certain standards. And, and I think if you look back and see some of the very first roads that were paved under SPOLOST in the late 90s, you're going to find that they're still in good condition, and may not even require resurfacing, and that's 10, 11, 12 years right now. So it is very important to, to build the roads and to construct the roads right to begin with. So the roads that we're referring to with no base, little base, were built prior to the mid, to the mid 90s. Am I correct, Terry?
Yes, sir. When I, I came to the county in 96, and when I came, we started paving them to appropriate sections.
That's right.
And I can name you some roads, that, La Guin Mill Road, that little section there. It's been paved, what, 10 years, I guess?
It's been 90 now.
11 years, and we haven't resurfaced it yet, as an example. So when you do them right initially, you do get much longer life out of them.
You do.
We are, since, I can tell you, since 96, our, our paving or resurfacing, we've tried to do it to the point where they've been done appropriately with the right side, you know, with the right base under them. But one last comment. The, the funding is going to change under LARP. This year, GDOT has told us they will no longer, they're doing away with the LARP program, and they're combining LARP with the state aid, and they're calling it, you know, we love acronyms, they're calling it LMIG. So this year, we'll have to decide, and I've been in conversations with the county manager on that, do we want our money coming to us as resurfacing money, or to do projects, or some combination of both? And it was my recommendation to county manager that we, because of the urgency and of the resurfacing, to put all of our, they call it LMIG money now, into resurfacing. So, we love those acronyms.
Just when they get us trained with the right ones, they come along and change it.
They have to change it.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Chairman, could I just add one more?
One more thing pursuant to an email that I sent to the board several weeks ago regarding the oversight of this resurfacing program, and asking for the flexibility, rather than bringing numerous change orders, small change orders on the many projects. We're following, through Mr. Bush's office, in with Terry's cooperation, all of the projects as a whole, and our resurfacing budget as of last week was $112,000 under budget, when take, taking all of the work that has been done together. And we'll continue to monitor that, and I'll ask Mr. Bush to provide an update at the next work session.
Okay, thank you. If there are no further comments, we have a resolution before us awarding this bid to Atlanta Paving and Concrete Construction, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. The next item is a resolution requesting award of a bid for intersection improvements for Bill Gardner Parkway at Tanger Boulevard, and that's Exhibit Number 2.
We hope this is the final conclusion of a much, of about a two-year process, and trying to get a right turn lane added from, on Bill Gardner Parkway, from the northbound exit ramp up to Tanger Boulevard. This project was put out for bid. We had nine bids that were, that were received on this. E.R. Snell was the low bidder, in the amount of $197,490. And we recommend that we award to E.R. Snell. E.R. Snell's done several of our SPOLOST road projects, and we feel like they're a good contractor, and we would recommend award to them.
Does any board member have a question or comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Holder?
I do. The $197,490, Terry, is, what is the total project cost? I know this is the construction, but I know we have some right-of-way acquisition.
We're, we're going to have right-of-way acquisition, less than $10,000. We have a little bit of utility, I believe, some, and that's about it. The right-of-way wasn't very much, and utilities, we, we finally got some confirmation on, you know, on the power as to who was going to pay with those. So there's probably about $15,000, I believe, outside of this. So we're probably looking at about $215,000, somewhere in there, I think.
Okay, to make the board aware, and especially the two new members, there was a, this is a public-private agreement, partnership, between the City of Locust Grove, Henry County, and the Shalandra Group, that is responsible for the development of the Walmart property in there. The city and the county agreed to share the cost of up to, in thirds, one-third, 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 up to $100,000 each, up to the $100,000 for each, the city and the county. So this will, this being, this coming in under bid will, will be shared equally in thirds, so therefore, it will, the county will not have to pay the full $100,000 that is escrowed today. So I'm proud to see this bid come in under. And one more time, I must inject the fact that this being an exit ramp off of I-75, there is no assistance from the Georgia Department of Ed, or, well, Georgia Department of Transportation to assist in this improvement. And that's Interstate 75.
Any other comments on this item? If not, Mr. Holder, this lies in your district, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
I have a second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you, Morgan.
Moving on to Capital Projects, the first item is a resolution requesting approval of a governmental encroachment agreement with Georgia Power for the new transit building. Our presenter is Mr. Ron Burkhalter, Capital Projects Director, Exhibit Number 3. Good morning.
Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. It's necessary to enter into a governmental encroachment agreement for the easement between Henry County and Georgia Power for the new transit building in McDonough. The county attorney has reviewed this agreement, which is attached to the resolution, and has found no legal issues. There's no cause to Henry County involved in this agreement, and upon execution of the agreement, Georgia Power will have the documents recorded at the county courthouse. In the agreement, this is the transit building here, this is Industrial Boulevard, this is the 140-foot easement here, as you can see from this drawing, we have to cross that easement with several drainage pipes, and we're also going to use that easement there for access for the transit building, and the new 911 building is sitting here behind us. I'll answer any questions.
Does any board member have a question or comment? If not, you have before you a resolution approving the governmental encroachment agreement between Henry County and Georgia Power, and I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. The next item is a resolution requesting award of a bid to design, build, construct a pre-engineered steel building for the Henry County Fleet Lube Shop, and that's Exhibit Number 4. And Mr. David Williamson will also be joining Mr. Burkhalter for this presentation. Good morning.
Good morning. Federal grant money was obtained to fund the construction of Henry County Fleet Lube Shop. Proposals were solicited on a design-build basis, design-build-construct. It's a pre-engineered steel building that will be located just behind our existing fleet maintenance off of Work Camp Road. The scope of work in this building, the building is 55 feet by 7-
The scope of work in this building, the building is 55 feet by 70 feet by 28 foot high, which is a clear height for the, the buses to get into the facility and they can be elevated up. 10 vendors submitted proposals. The staff reviewed and rated all the proposals. We checked references and verified and scored each one of the proposals. Staff recommends awarding a bid to Garrison Construction out of Macon, Georgia, in the amount of $118,134.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item?
I do want to mention something for clarification. When this grant first came to us, I had a citizen who had emailed concerned that Henry County was going into the business of opening a lube shop in Henry County. So, for those who, who may be watching to dispel any confusion, this is a lube shop that is designed to service our county vehicles, not public citizen vehicles, correct?
Correct. It's, it's for transit, for Henry County transit.
For Henry County transit. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, the funds are from the Federal Transit Administration's American Recovery and Reinvestment Act and is specifically for transit buses.
Okay. All right, you have before you a resolution awarding the bid to Garrison Construction in the amount of $118,134 and I'll entertain a motion. Uh, Mr. Alletta had a question.
Question. You mentioned the federal grants and this $118,000, are the grants paying for this or is it?
Yes, sir.
Is this replacing a building, adding, onto a building or the need for a new building?
It's a totally new facility, totally new building, not a building.
We don't have anything like it right now or?
They do, but it's run out, run out of space.
Okay, that's what I was getting at, okay.
The current facility does, that is currently where they are servicing the buses, but as, as anything else with our expanding fleet, it's getting more and more difficult to have enough vehicles or space in there to do this. So, this is one of those things that we think is very timely, especially in the fact if we're getting some, some federal dollars that don't have to come out of our general fund, we certainly are going to need this space, you know, to, to expand really is what it's needed for.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, we had a motion and a second. Is that correct? Mr. Stamey, you made the motion, Mr. Holmes seconded. All right, all in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to SPOST, we have a resolution requesting award of a bid to furnish and install curb and gutter at Heritage Park, exhibit number five.
Seal bids were solicited to furnish and install the curb and gutter, catch basins and sidewalks at Heritage Park. This is going to be a future, or a parking lot that, that we're going to pay, this is just the curb and gutter part of it. The scope of work includes 3,300 linear feet of curb and gutter, seven catch basin, that's tops and throats, the catch basins will be installed by the DOT, and seven square yards of sidewalk. 20 vendors submitted bids on this proposal. The funding for this is available in SPOST II Heritage Park account. And staff recommends award to the low bidder, Upstate Curb and Gutter out of Homer, Georgia, in the amount of $31,515.
Does any board member have a question or comment? If not, Mr. Stamey, this lies in your district and I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Alletta, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. We tabled item B, so moving on to C, we have a resolution requesting approval to rescind resolution 11-24 concerning Rockaway Road. Our presenter is Rocky Romero, SPOST Transportation Project Director, exhibit number seven. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and board members. At the February 1st meeting, board meeting, the Board of Commissioners approved their resolution to reimburse Georgia Transmission Corporation 50% of the actual cost to relocate the existing poles on Rockaway Road. After double checking into the prior rights, we found that only four out of 10 poles were in private easements. Therefore, a new agreement is needed and the one approved prior needs to be rescined.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, there's a resolution before you rescinding resolution 11-24 concerning Rockaway Road and I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Motion by Mr. Bowman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. The next item is a resolution requesting approval of a transmission line relocation agreement and that's exhibit number eight.
Yes, in this new, new agreement, the Georgia Transmission Corporation requests reimbursement of 40% of the actual relocation cost. The new estimate is $829,362, which is $100,000 less than the previous agreement. This is due to the relocation, poles will be installed inside county right-of-way or an or easements.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution approving a trans, transmission line relocation agreement, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Bowman, is there a second? Second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. The next item under nine is an appoint, our appointments to the Georgia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities Regional Planning Board. I had received a letter about a month ago pertaining to this item. This is a board, this is a state, it's a regional board that's, I guess it was enacted under state law. Henry County has had three positions on this board for a number of years, however, for the last few years, we've had no appointments to the board and they've asked that we make those appointments and fill those seats. These are non-compensated positions and so, because this is dealing with mental health issues and developmental disabilities, I had asked Susan Craig if she could make some recommendations for people to fill those positions. And she recommended Angela Craig and Amy Coons as two people to serve on this board. And additionally, it was Jim Risher is someone that, his son is special needs and, and he feels like he has an interest in this area and he was asked to serve as well. So, you have before you a resolution for three appointments and I would ask if there's any discussion from the board on these items. If not, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the minutes, which we are going to table until after executive session. Did anyone sign up for public comment? All right, county manager, any comments?
No, ma'am.
County attorney?
No, ma'am.
Upcoming meetings, tomorrow, February 15th at 6:30 PM, we have a regular meeting. Monday, February 28th at 9:00 AM, we have a workshop meeting. Tuesday, March the 1st at 9:00 AM, we have a regular commission meeting. Monday, March 14th at 9:00 AM and Tuesday, March 15th at 6:30 PM, both of these are regular board meetings. At this time, I need a motion to convene into executive session for the purposes of potential pending litigation, personnel matters or land acquisition.
So, move, Madam Chair.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. I need a motion to reconvene into public session.
So, move, Madam Chair.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Alletta, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. At this time, I need a motion for approval of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session.
So, move.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. Since we moved this item on the agenda, I need a motion to table the minutes to a future meeting.
So, move.
Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. If there's no further business to come before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Holmes, second by Mr. Alletta, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. We stand adjourned.
Yes.